Well, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. You have an agenda in front of you? Any additions? Hearing none. Does somebody wish to move it loud? I'll lose the agendas presented. Any discussion on that? Okay, none. We'll call the question. It should be able to do electronically. We'll try. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the... Okay, any discussion on our motion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the committee of the whole for December the eighth. Any wish to move that? Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. Regional Victim Services side, gentlemen. So if you want to come on up here.
Hi, everyone. I'm John Smith. I'm the new program manager for Victim Services. I've already gotten out of the community law because of the last year, so this is nice for once. It's nice to do something in person. Just kind of to give you a little bit. Touch base. We really appreciate your guys' continued support and donations over the years. It really means a lot to us. Yeah. If you can take that slide, please. So just to kind of give you a little brief history about us, we are under Solicitor General, but we also are the Victims of Crime Act, and it was developed in 1984. The Victims of Crime Act documents a standard treatment for victims and establishes a fund to assist them as well, so that the people with victims of crime, assault, sexual assault, murders, any of those things, those are the things that... The things. Today, these funds also help victim service providers recreate and collaborate with other public safety initiatives. We help victims with out-of-pocket expenses such as emergency accommodations, which was actually kind of nice. I got to finally do that last week. Nice to do something. Or protective measures, access to counseling for victims of serious violent crimes and families of homicides, court support to victims and witnesses, and be able to provide the day-to-day services that we do. So for us, we have actually, I think it's really cool. We've been around since 2001. A lot of victim service units are even newer than that, so that's quite an accomplishment in itself for being such a smaller community. Our society is a nonprofit volunteer-based registered society, working directly out of the RCMP detachment. We serve the Vulcan county... or sorry, we serve the town of Vulcan as well as all of Vulcan County that are within it. So that includes permanent residents, seasonal employees, weekday residents, and any visitors that enter our... So let's say someone got into a motor vehicle accident and they're not from here, it would still go to the RCMP, therefore, we would still serve them. Yeah, so we do a little bit of everything, which is pretty nice. So we're all trained in notification of care after a death has occurred. So we get to help the RCMP with that, so the RCMP is not... They're there to provide the information, and then they leave. We would continue to provide that emotional support, which is nice to have. We're 24/7 crisis support, both in person and over the phone, especially during COVID. It's been a lot of over the phone, but it's still nice that people are utilizing our service. This includes being on call during holidays and weekends, like I said, 24/7, 365 days a year, so that's pretty awesome. I come from yet to court. I actually got to do that today for the first time in a while. We got to go to trial and support five victims. So I'm pretty fortunate to be able to do that as well in my role, as my advocates. Emotional support, we liaison between a victim and the crime prosecutor to their case, so we make sure that they get the best information, the most up-to-date information, and that they get to talk with the coroner. We refer to various agencies that might help with them. My biggest supporter and biggest liaison has been FCSS. I absolutely love working with them. They're phenomenal. Counseling, income support, legal aid, all of those things. Providing them with information about their rights as victims, especially when it comes to court. A lot of people don't really know what to expect or what their rights or roles are as a victim, and it's nice that we can inform them of those things. Debriefing with first responders, school groups, anything when a traumatic event has occurred. I've been able to do one debriefing with the fire departments. It's coming on, and it's been nice to also just get to know everyone, too. And then public education and awareness about court issues such as domestic violence and gender-based violence, addictions and mental health. We haven't really been able to go into the schools lately, but I'm hoping that with the new restrictions that are supposed to be coming out after Christmas, we'll be able to do some presentations for the school. So who are we? I'm not Victim Services. I'm the hardworking team. Right now, this is the most advocates we've ever had. We've got nine, which I'm pretty proud of. And one full-time paid staff, which is myself. And we're always looking. If you're looking for volunteer training. We come from various different backgrounds, but we all have one thing in common, is that we're just very passionate about helping people. I feel very lucky for the team that I have. Everyone comes from different backgrounds, different educations, and it's nice to, because I'm not a local person, having local people kind of helps me bridge that gap as well, which is really nice. We break down barriers that people encounter after they've experienced crime, tragedy, or trauma, and then our biggest thing is that we provide information, referrals, and resources. So we want to make sure that everyone has the most information and most up-to-date information. Any resource that's local might not be local, all of those things. Yeah, so studies show that through early intervention after a crisis has occurred, long-term problems associated with tragedy can be greatly reduced. Victims have indicated that in a crisis situation, after police leave, 47% would like someone to talk to. To me, that's... it may not seem like a big number, but that's a pretty big number. 33% would like someone to stay with them so that they feel more protected. 18% would like advice on getting help. 16% have concerns regarding their children. 13% would like emergency transportation. 11% would like assistance in clearing out the scene, especially with motor vehicle accidents or something of the regular. 9% would like emergency financial support. Yeah, so who do we serve? So we serve anyone within the county of Vulcan. That's Carmengay, Milo, Rat, Champion, Arrowhead, Mosley, Ensign, et cetera. If you're in here, we're here to help you. Our caseload varies, but at any given time, we could be handling upwards of 20 to 30 cases a month. Right now, I have 37. So it might not seem like a lot, but with the county Vulcan being the size of it, we'll help whoever, as long as if it's a child, obviously, we have to have parental permission. We don't discriminate on who we help. People of all ages, genders, backgrounds, religions, cultures, mental and physical health states are treated equally. And then how we operate. We primarily receive our referrals from the RCMP. I actually created a forum with help of Jen at the fire department. So now we have an actual referral form from the fire department so that we can get all the information from them as well, which is pretty cool. We operate out of the RCMP detachment, and then we're a nonprofit, so we're funded primarily on annual grant given by Solicitor General. And then, and that comes from the Victims of Crime Fund, and then donations such as the one that you guys have given us in the county, which we greatly appreciate. This grant is needed every year, or else victim service organizations across the province wouldn't be able to operate. And then while this grant covers basic data operations, it does not cover other aspects of the job. So that would be like mental health. Unfortunately, Solicitor General doesn't cover mental health, and right now, I would say, out of the 37 cases I have on my caseload, I would say about 23 are all mental health. So how can you guys help? We're kind of seeking just continued support from the town, but for a different purpose. I know in the past, I know Nicole is the program manager. She was asking for team bonding funding. Right now, just with everything with COVID, I'm really hoping to get some funding to help pay for mental health hours. Since Solicitor General, they don't see my mental health thing, so those... I think it's 22 or 23 people that are solely based for mental health that are just calling for support right now. They don't recognize that, so they don't see that I'm doing this huge caseload. They only see the little numbers of the crime. If we're considered in this regard, it would greatly help us continue to provide these types of support, just so that we can continue to get our Solicitor General funding the way that we have it, to pay for me, to help the advocates. And then all funds would be allocated for paying for additional time for mental health hours or other areas where the county might see fit, given where we learn today. And community support such as yours is what keeps ASU going, and we really, really appreciate it. I was told to keep it under 15 minutes.
You did well.
But you're really fast. I can ask questions.
Yeah, any questions for...
How long have you been with Victim Services here?
I was a year December 1st. I got hard on in October, and then since I was living in Lockbridge, just trying to find a place to live over there was quite hard, so... Yeah, I've loved it so far. It's been really good, and Judy and Barbara have come by board, too, so it's nice.
So when you said December 1st last year, December, so you did...
December 1st was my first RCMP security clearance day, so that's what I go off of.
2021 or 20...
2020.
2021.
Oh, sorry. One year.
That's okay.
I'm like, right this summer. Yeah.
Any other questions?
And your mental health issues, there's Suicide and Abuse Act, your main...
Suicide, so it also counts if we don't have criminal charges with domestic violence. If it's just like a domestic or familial violence argument, unfortunately, so agendas are decidable in that moment, but they are... they're crying out for help right now.
So are you still asking for the same amount for the grant?
Grant or more would be greatly appreciated, just because we do need the funding for more hours for mental health. Right now, we're funded for two hours a week, and I can't fit 23 people in two hours a week. It's too crowded out.
Okay, Kim, how's that?
So just for the new councilies that are here, the funding for Victim Services is done through a reoccurring grant. So we do set an amount every year. Last year, it's $5,000. Last year, it was reduced to $4,500, just based on the town's cash situation. You just finished budget, and you're looking at approving a budget this evening that includes the full $5,000 again for them. And the nice part about it is, from a programming standpoint, is there's no... There's no stipulation on where in your guys' budget you spend that, so...
So do you get grants from any other, other than the county? Do you get from any other counties?
From the county, so unfortunately, right now, we're pulling out of other areas of our budget to compensate for those two hours, but... Yeah.
And then the percentage on your stats, is that, is that a global, or is that local?
That's in Alberta.
Oh, that's okay, so it's not a local one. And out of your... you said you have nine advocates. What's the genders?
All female. You would love to have some males in there. I think it would be really good for our dynamic, and also, some people respond better to males. It's nice to have a variety.
Any other questions for John?
I guess with the letter, we know that you thought of somebody from just about a lot of the areas of the county, just Vulcan.
Lowman, Champion, a few in Vulcan.
Carmengay.
No, Lowman Carmengay.
Lori.
Here, close to Arrowhead. Oh, Lori's over there. Yeah, she's on Lori's pitch. And then Queenstown, so it's kind of nice that we have someone from everywhere. Yeah, when I first started, that was my goal, was to gain a little bit more traction. So I went to all the post offices, and I handed out posters and stuff like that, and I actually got quite a bit of feedback. I got three new advocates in the last couple months even, so it's been really nice.
And so on, the advocates, are they still have to be vetted by the RCMP first and then, and then so...
That's our biggest deterrents, I find, is just because it's such a lengthy process. For the most part, it has been sped up a little bit, but it was still about six or seven months for my last three advocates to get.
So what level, what clearance do you have to have from the RCMP? Is it level three, or level two, or level...
I'm not sure exactly what it is. It's the exact same one I have. It's just, it's just called an RCMP security clearance.
It's hundreds of what we need as the directors.
Yeah, no, I was just curious. I mean, I know that...
It's quite an intense interview, and a lot of people don't like that. Right now, it's nice, again, because with COVID, it's over the phone. I wouldn't want to have taken it in person, if I'm being honest. It's a three-hour interview.
Yeah, no, it's... I used to have my level two.
Oh, okay.
It was quite intense. On that, level one, you have to have, you know, they can be your relatives.
Yeah, it's relatives, employees, past 10 years.
Physically interview your relatives, so...
Oh, physically interviewed.
Yeah, it's pretty intense.
Okay, any other questions?
What type of training do the volunteers get?
So by Sol, Jim were required to do a few online trainings. It's about, I want to say 35 hours of online training that's recommended and required before you're allowed to go on a follow-up. I also provided in-office orientation. And then we, it's really nice, because we are budgeted for certain trainings, and we receive it through the group, for yourself, and we can sign you up for that. We just had two advocates specialize in sexual assault training, and it was about six week training. It was pretty cool. They really enjoyed it. Yeah, so that's what one thing that's like, I always say it's a little cold. Because even when you work a job, sometimes you don't feel prepared, right? When you do training, you're like, this does not apply to what I'm doing, so it's really nice.
Also, they tend to do, they have monthly meetings as well.
Yeah, we do a lot of meetings.
If people have questions, they can also ask more experienced ones, sort of in a mentorship setting.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Phil? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come out and...
No, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. It was nice to get up here and see some faces, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
And again, you're welcome. Okay, moving on, Lions Club, Mr. Markert.
I'm here, if you want me to...
Where do you want? You can go to the center, or you can...
I'll just stand here and look at pictures. What do we got? Can we go to the pictures first? It doesn't look that... What we want to do with the Lions, we want to do is ask for your permission to write on your sidewalks and not get fined for it. And so these are some of the ideas that we could use. We put them on the sidewalks so kids can play. How many times does mom take the kids to swimming lessons? Ones in, ones out. Mom, what am I going to do? So we're going to try to give them games to play at the pool. We think that it will enhance the pool. As everybody knows, the Lions Club thinks that the pool is just a great place, and working with the town, we really did a superb job of making it even better. And so we want to enhance that whole facility as much as we can, and so we just thought, well, why not have games for the kids to play on the sidewalks? And so this is just an example. If you just want to flip through them, Karen. And this one, I guess, here's another thing we're going to try, if you guys say yes. Not only can we have games that can be played during the daytime, but we're going to try putting glow, or paint that glows on it, and so it might be a glow, so the kids can come out when it's a little darker, and they can still play the games that they want. Yeah, and I guess you may think of, well, do those lines know how to draw straight lines? We've asked Kim Fortin if she would do it for us, and she said yes. And for all of you that have been around me, if you don't know, she's the one that does all the paintings and all the signs in the building, so I think she knows what she's doing. If you just want to flip through the rest of them.
That's the only two that will...
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay, now just go to the bottom, and I'll just, or the top one, I guess, maybe. There we go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one with all the printing on. There we go. Just, just to tell you what we're doing. We want to put paint on the sidewalk. We want to have it for kids to use during the day and at night. Like I say, we're going to get Kim to do it. And we're prepared to pay for all the costs, all the work and labor that goes into it.
And does that include cleanup?
Yes, it will. And I'll say right out, right now, that if something goes wrong and it doesn't work out, we will clean it up. So, yes.
Is it weather resistant, or like the snow, or will you have to repaint every year? Do you know?
Well, and I guess maybe we would just proceed with one game. Those kids do a whole bunch, find out it doesn't work, but do one and make sure that it works, and it works. We'd like to do a few more around the pool.
And this is only around the pool?
Right down there. Yeah, yeah.
And in the past, we've had some other organizations that have come to us with stuff, and so we've kind of created a different process than just strictly going through council that allows administration to vet the program and then, you know, approve the programs. And so then they go through a whole bunch of things. So we've done with the Kinsman Club. We're in a mince, or trying to do it with the Nine and Lionheart Societies and some of them, to make sure that what's being done is the same with every group that we participate with. So that'd be something that, you know, council needs to talk about. The one I have a problem with going in the dark is that in the summertime, when it gets dark at 11 o'clock at night, I'm not sure that your grandkids...
You want your kids out there just...
Be playing hopscotch, and then I don't think John Seaman would be too impressed either with going in the dark. Again, you know, I'm not saying that it's not a great idea, but I'm not sure an outdoor activity that doesn't get dark in the summertime until... I mean, right now, it would be great, but then I don't think they're going to have too many kids playing hopscotch at night in the, around the pool or not.
Well, it's just, if we're just going to try one, it's a good idea to see if it works, and if it doesn't work, well, then we don't do it. We just use the, make the games on sidewalk and make them for daytime.
And again, too, you know, we've had some other groups that have suggested different things, so, you know, I think that we want to make sure that we kind of stay consistent with our requests from the Lions Club and vice versa, from the Lions Club back to the town, that we follow the same, you know, requests or proceedings that we did with them. So again, I'm not saying that council's not interested in participating with the Lions Club, because we've participated with all our service clubs in a positive way, but we just want, I think, personally, I think we need to try and keep it consistent with what we've done with other groups. Kim?
So the Lions Club has approached myself about this. So that the rest of council knows, the Kinsmen, a couple of years ago, came to council and asked for several projects that they were working on within the community, and trying to vet a process so that they don't have to bring every idea to council like this. So what we, what was done is, we helped present that, where they submitted a letter to council, where council gave approval to do community projects within the town, working with the Community Services Manager and the Public Works Forum, where they could approve smaller projects, just so that we don't get bogged down in numerous proposals, one after another after another, when they're working on one specific park. So I know that I provided Josh with, as the president of Lions Club, with a draft letter that you guys could put together that would bring that, so that you could work with Bonnie and Stu to do some of these smaller projects, where you wouldn't have to bring them to council for approval. And then, again, both Bonnie and Stu know when a project comes forward that they go, oh, yeah, I know, we better ask council if we should do this. Then they help the Lions Club bring that proposal with all the background. Here's how we're going to take care of it. Here's how... And so that council could actually make a decision on it, rather than right on the spot when we do it, so...
So you want me to talk to Bonnie and Stu then?
That's up to council on how they'd like to move forward with it, but yeah, we could do that, where we could, where we could bring this back and do it maybe with that overscoping letter, because I know you guys have a ton of projects that you're going to look at, at the pool over the next couple of years, and this, this could help with that process, so you don't have to come in every time.
I mean, I think it's kind of neat. Like I said, I mean, the glow in the dark, I mean, I think it would be kind of neat if you could have something like that inside of a facility, where you could, you know, have the kids after school be able to go in somewhere where they can shut the lights off and have it dark and have some games. I think that would be really cool, really neat, like... I mean, I was thinking of, like, Arena has a prime example. In the summertime, when they take the ice out, be able to have someone on the ice surface that was able to do that, so that the kids could come in, be cooler in the facility than outside, the heat, and yet be able to shut the lights off and have some hopscotch and games and stuff like that, too. So, but again, I know it's in another area of the town, but I was just, you know, I appreciate it. I thought they looked really neat, the glow in the dark, but I thought, holy crap, you know, I tried to shoot fireworks in June often. I have to wait till after midnight to... I'm not sure if I would want my, you know, six-year-old granddaughter out there.
Just if you don't want to stay up that day.
Grandpa probably goes to bed early.
A lot more truth, you know. Give her a couple more hours, and I'll be getting up. But anyway, you know, I'm sorry, I'm kind of talking Florida. Is there any questions for Ron, or, I mean, um...
I'm just thinking, I mean, I, my first thought, too, was, well, that's great in this time of year, but in the summer, it's kind of late. But then again, if the family's out watching, I mean, if we have our movie nights again, and the kids don't always sit still, that gives them something to do off on the side, so I mean, there's...
And there's fall, there's spring, too, the timeline of the...
We have to do...
I think it's a cool idea, just thinking outside the box.
I think the neon or glow in the dark might, will look pretty neat at night, even if nobody's using it. If, you know, somebody's driving by or walking by and sees it, like, that's kind of neat.
That's just a couple of drunken adults playing some...
And so you said you want to do a trial run with just one painting?
Yeah, I think so.
How are you going to monitor how it does?
Well, I think we'll be able to tell how much it's used, how much maintenance requires, those big, big items.
The location, is it up just close to where the actual pool is, or down on this kind of the sidewalks that lead down towards the street sidewalks, or which locations?
Well, we're open to suggestion, but I guess when I first thought about it, I thought of that piece of sidewalk that you just painted on, I'll call it the north side of the pool, that you just played where we were talking about the tires and stuff. There, or, but it doesn't matter. It could be in front of the door or at the pool. Or it could be around the south side. It doesn't really matter.
Yeah, and I think that's an opportunity for the, you know, the two organizations to get together and do some walk around and talk about it. Same as, you know, the maintenance concerns and questions. I mean, if it's put off to one side, there might be far less maintenance than right... Like you said, right in front of the door, you know, might need more maintenance.
That's true.
And then the other thing, too, is, you know, concerns of, you know, the slipperiness, if it's a painted surface, you know, whether it's going to become slippery in the wintertime or fall or whatever, so I think that's about it, you know.
And there is, council did give approval a few years ago for the early childhood code funding a few years ago, and they did games on several sidewalks and pathways throughout town, and there's a couple at the pool on that, the main entrance in, but they faded just about, just about to where you can't see it. So that's where getting feedback from Stu and Bonnie on the ones that have already been done in the area could help on picking a location and bringing something back to council.
And we still have the stencils, I believe. I think we have them stored at FCSS.
Yeah.
The stencils that we use. I'm sure we could lend them to you if this is approved. And, but they're, I believe, at FCSS.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, I think we just got to be careful we don't...
Sure.
Follow a kind of a procedure that meets everybody's criteria, so...
I didn't know the Kinsmen had a procedure.
Yeah, no, we've done work with them, and again, exactly with the ring, we'll, you see, and like I said, nine and nine, our society, we've got, you know, some projects on the go with them, too. And so we're just trying to make it so that we can kind of follow a method that looks fairly equal to everybody.
The process, once a club gets busy doing projects like that, all of a sudden, we found that they were back every council meeting, asking for the next, next thing to do, so it made it a lot easier for the group to know what they could do without having to wait that two weeks. They can, you know, here's something that needs to go to council. Here's something that we can go ahead with right now, so that hopefully you guys can do exactly the same.
So Josh already has that letter?
I provided him a template here, not too long ago, yeah, so we did have a brief discussion about it, so...
Good, because that, you know, one of the things that is going through my mind is, well, you know, like, we all know Kim does fantastic work, and you could put your games and put on over top of a scene, or of course, what I think of being to put a lion in. Put the game on top of a lion. Maybe that's too much, and that would be great to have a committee that I could go to where people like, go to and say, is this acceptable?
That's what that process was supposed to do, is streamline that, so that, you know, if it's drawing on the sidewalk or the time capsule, it's all...
Well, I don't have any. Really good news.
All ready? Any other questions, concerns? Okay, well, thank you very much for taking the time to come out, Ron.
Thanks for giving me the time.
Yeah, and you're welcome to stay to the end, too, if you like, or...
Oh, I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's good. Do you guys want to talk about that right at the moment, or do you want to leave it to the end, or you just thought on the agenda?
Not on the agenda, so we could actually work with Ron to actually bring back a proposal of a sudden. With the administration, if you so choose.
I just accept it. Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to Ron tomorrow and then...
No, I don't think we need to right now.
I'll reach out to Ron tomorrow and have him contact Stu and Bonnie to get their proposal for the jury, I mean.
Okay, all ready? So moving on then to correspondence information, 5.1, the South Carolina November 2021 report. Hopefully, everybody had the opportunity to read it. You can read in the frustrations and the dig on the province. Okay, the next one is the Alberta Recreation and Parks Association. Congratulating all of you folks for being successful candidates in the election and insurgents from the city of Coal Lake. Sorry?
Don't want to speak to this.
Sure.
So for the new councilors, we get letters CC'd if they're through the AUMA and that, and over the last two years, we've had quite a few involving ambulance service... And over the last two years, we've had quite a few involving ambulance service, the coal mining. Any big thing that comes up and a council makes motion on, they generally send this to us. So if we get these, if there's multiple, we'll put them under one heading, but if this, like this one comes as a singular, we put it on the agenda, just to make sure that you guys are able to read it and that you all get that information. So this is really just the letter that Coal Lake sent to for your information.
Is everybody's blurry?
Blurry.
This one is about summer.
Okay, you know, I had a couple that didn't work. Anyways, I could read it, but it's.
Yeah, don't mind, came through nice and clear. Okay, any questions on any of those three? Okay, somebody wish to move for information? Okay, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaws and policies, so fees and rates and fees by law.
So I was able to review this with council, committee in the hall. I was able to reach out to Councilor Schnett, because he was unable to attend, and got him a digital copy and answer some of the questions that I could. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the updated bylaw. There's no changes that weren't discussed at the committee of the hall. We just amended it, so it was pretty, we'll fit into the bylaw more. So this is a bylaw, so it requires three readings, and of course, you can do that all in tonight's meeting if you like, but you do need the unanimous consent to go to the third reading.
Okay, any, oh, good, a good question, or?
I was just going to make the motion, the first of council, to give the twenty-twenty-two rates and fees by law fifteen oh three dash twenty-one first reading.
Okay, so Miles moved to first reading, any discussion on Miles' motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, second reading. Barbara? Okay, Barbara moved second reading, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, so now we need to introduce, introduce, introduction of the third reading. So this is the one that has to be unanimous, our, sorry, Cole moves to introduce the third. Again, you know, we had, you know, quite a while that we spoke on this and discussed this at the last committee in the hall. So Cole moved to introduce this, and like I said, it has to be unanimous, so any more discussion on this? If not, we won't call the question. Wouldn't that be mode? Okay, so it's carried unanimously again. Okay, so now we can move on to the third re, final reading. Somebody wish to move that? Okay, Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Okay, so third and final reading is approved unanimously, and so this will come into effect January one, other than the one that's in there for the arena. It does, it's effective on the twenty-two beginning of the season, so it doesn't affect the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two season, it affects the twenty-two, twenty-three season, so. Okay, moving on to the budget, interim budget. Oh, gosh, keep on doing that. And so this is the one that we've had two meetings on the committee in the hall, discussed how we can introduce it and how we can move it forward. The first go-around had a couple things that needed to be altered. The second time, we went over it line by line, area by area. So this is just our summary of accounts, and I guess, again, we have to approve this one here tonight.
Just making sure council's aware, this is just interim, so you will still, once you receive your financial statements for twenty-twenty-one and the assessment for twenty-twenty-two, we'll sit down again through committee hall, refine the budget in areas, you know, obviously, if the assessment raises or lowers, or whether there's an appetite for tax increase or drawback to that. So this is just interim, and it's just, as per the MGA, we have to complete it before the end of the year, so.
And I know that there's lots of councillors that have had opportunity to ask administration on some of.
The heads of the different departments come in and just kind of explain things to us. I mean, this is, I mean, I've been through the process before, but I know as a new councillor, it was very handy to hear, well, even now, for me to hear what each department, what their, just ask them questions directly and have them kind of talk to us of what their thoughts were. So I know it took time, like I say, it was over a couple days, but I think we really did some good homework on that, so I'm more comfortable with this, like, to be able to make a decision, so I just, once again, appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions or concerns or thoughts? If not, I'd entertain a motion to Judy. Moves to accept the interim budget for twenty-twenty-two? Any discussion?